Good evening. This, the 98th meeting of the Baltimore, of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council, is now turned to order. Um, now called to order. Um, I'm gonna ask anybody that have cell phones to please turn them off or put them on vibrate, okay? Uh, tonight's invocation will be led by Father Martin, I mean Marty Nocci.
Is that it?
Nocci. Okay. Of St. Mary's of the Assumption Catholic Church. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Reverend.
No one ever gets it right, so. Be with him, let us pray to whatever God, the way God manifests, God's self in our lives, mindful of all the, the needs of this community, this city, as we pray. Lord God, we ask you to send your, your spirit, your blessing upon all who have gathered here, all who continue to strive to make this city as best as it can be, that we could put aside our own selfish needs and, and work towards the common good of all. We ask you to give us the wisdom that we all need, so that, uh, we could seek the healing, the healing that all, all of us need in our hearts and in our lives, uh, so that we can become the people that you have called all of us to be in, in serving your will in this world. And we pray this in all our prayers through our God, the God who gives us life. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Want to thank Father for the invocation. The clerk recalled the role of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Henry Middleton, Ry Singer, Stokes, Branch, Clark, Holton, Welsh, Specter. Ms. President, Vivica Quaram.
Thank you. Uh, today's showcase Baltimore presentation is Vanya Pettigrew of the Root Branch Production and Film Academy. She's going to share information about healing through heritage and youth-produced summer film enrichment project. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for having me this evening. Again, my name is Vanya Pettigrew, and I'm the CEO and founder of Root Branch Productions and Film Academy. Um, we, as Root Branch Productions, we are a full-service media production firm, and we've been here in Baltimore since 2006, so we're now celebrating nine years. And in 2010, I started the Film Academy, in which we teach media production to children. Our program starts as young as six years old up until the age of 18. I'm here tonight to speak specifically about our current film project entitled Rated MH. So, very similar to like a Rated PG, it's Rated MH. And the MH stands for My Heritage. So, I'm wearing the shirt so that you can kind of get a visual of the brand. Um, so, the whole premise of this film is a combination of film, fashion, and social media to engage our youth to know who they are, to learn their heritage, take pride in their heritage, and quite frankly, fashionably rock their heritage. So, in an era of Black Lives Matter and All Lives Matter, for Root Branch, one of the things we looked at was for our children, that's a little abstract of a concept, because it's hard to understand why you matter when you don't know who you are. So, the whole premise of the Rated MH, My Heritage project, is to teach our young people who they are, where they come from, and what they made, what they are made of, and then they will truly understand why they matter. So, I encourage everyone on their smart devices, not now, but to take a look, go to YouTube and type in Rated MH, and you will be able to watch the film trailer, which was produced by our youth this summer during our Summer Film Academy. This project is done in partnership with the Reginald F. Lewis Museum, and one of the reasons why I'm sharing it today with the council is because we're hoping to continue production of this film as a docu-series. In other words, it's a documentary to be produced in episodes. And I'm gonna be continuing to look for young people to produce this piece, so I need your help to identify strong voices in your district to take part in this film project to help tell our heritage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, let's get a hand. Some good stuff there. It is the Council of Councilmen to generalize the invocation. Ask for motion to generalize the prayer. Um, Chair of Recognized Councilmen Kern.
Mr. President, I want to send my sincere thanks to Father Marty from St. Mary's of Assumption. Um, uh, we talked last week, I know I tried to get, uh, my confessor Bill Burke and Joe Muth, and I didn't want him to reach out and say that he was third string, but if you have the best bullpen in baseball, you'll have the best team. So, I want to thank Father Marty, uh, for being here today and giving us the invocation. I know the St. Mary's of Assumption has gone on its 166 years of existence up in northeast Baltimore, and I know Father Marty will be a great leader for that parish, and I bless his sacrament, it's gonna be part of your, no, just St. Mary's of Assumption. Um, so, I want to thank Father Marty, and I know that the general clerk will try to provide, uh, documentation to generalize, so I'll make a move to generalize Father Marty's remarks.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of journalizing the prayer say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Ms. President, the general proceedings from the July 20th City Council meetings on the council member's desk.
As their motion, motion by Vice President Ry Singer, second by Councilman Mosby, all those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two to four of the agenda. Executive nomination.
EA 15 dash 0293, Julian Todd Andrews Lee, Member Ethics Board, 11th District.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 15 dash 0558, Animal Fighting Paraphernalia, ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting the possession, sale, transfer, or manufacture of animal fighting paraphernalia with the intent to engage in or otherwise promote or facilitate an animal fight, defining certain terms, listing relevant factors, and determining whether an object is an item of animal fighting paraphernalia, imposing certain penalties, and generally relating to the objects used or intended or designed for use in the training, preparation, conditioning, or breeding for, in conducting or otherwise, and further into animal fights. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration, and Kern.
This has been assigned to the Health Committee. You want to speak to that? Chair of Recognized Councilman Kern.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just want to briefly say that, uh, working with collaboration with the Health Department, we're gonna move forward with this issue. Uh, recently, Baltimore City Animal Control has made significant strides to rid our city of animal fighting. Prohibiting the possession of animal fighting paraphernalia is critically important to support this effort. Currently, the law does not provide adequate remedies that animal control and/or law enforcement enters a location that is clearly used to promote or otherwise facilitate animal fighting, but no animals happen to be present at the time. So, this will strengthen the laws to give our animal enforcement officers and our police department, our sheriff's department, and all those in the efforts to stop animal fighting. Animal fighting is only cruel to animals, but is associated with other illegal and often violent activities. Prohibiting the possession of animal fighting paraphernalia will help eliminate the vile practice from our city and make Baltimore safer and healthier. I want to thank the Health Department for, for putting this in, and I want to thank you, Council President. We'll have a hearing sometime after, uh, early fall to make the city safer.
Thank you.
City Council Bill 15 dash 0559, rezoning 139 West Austin Street, ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 139 West Austin Street, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the M3 zoning district to the B24 zoning district. Sponsor Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15 dash 0560, rezoning 2030 Alice Anna Street, ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for property known as 2030 Alice Anna Street, as outlined on red on the accompanying plat, from the R8 zoning district to the R10 zoning district. Sponsor Kraft and Branch.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0246R, informational hearing, funding recreation centers by selling the city-owned Hilton Hotel. Resolution for the purpose of calling on representatives from the Baltimore Hotel Corporation, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Department of Finance to appear before the council to discuss the possibility of funding recreation centers, upgrades through the sale of city-owned Hilton Hotel. Sponsor President Young, Henry Middleton, Costello, Holton, Kraft, Branch, Stokes, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Welsh is the co-sponsor, Councilman Kern, Councilman Mosby, Council Vice President Ry Singer as co-sponsors, uh, Councilwoman Specter, um, I said Welsh, I said Welsh. Um, this is another, um, this is just a resolution, it's not, um, a sale ordinance, it's just to gather some information on what we can probably get from the sale of this hotel. And I believe that we can get, um, you know, lots of money by selling this hotel. I believe that, you know, if you have a cash stream that's giving revenue to the city, you don't cut that off, you keep it running. Um, and I think, um, our garages, we do a very good job of really running garages, but we do a very poor job of running a hotel. And I think that hotels need to be in the private industry, and I don't think government should be competing against private industry in terms of running hotels. I guess people will say, well, they run the parking garage. We always rent parking garages and get good revenue from there. And if the administration want to, uh, use money to build rec centers, they can direct that money from Parking Authority today. They don't have to wait, they can do it now. And they could, um, leverage it by floating bonds to do, uh, the new rec centers. So, I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues for signing on to this resolution, and I'm gonna ask Council, uh, Ms. Stokes, to, um, try to set a hearing for this. And I want to set the record straight for those who are asking why both bills are not going at the same time. The difference is, one is a resolution and one is an ordinance, a sale ordinance, and that's the reason why. And after we give all, all of the information, then the ordinance will come right after that. So, I want to thank my co-sponsors, and this has been signed to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0247R, investigative hearing, mental health contracts. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the Department of Finance and the Baltimore City Police Department to appear before the City Council to discuss the city's contract for mental health screenings and psychological services, the past and future costs of these screenings and services, and the oversight and management of these screenings and services. Sponsor President Young, Henry Middleton, Costello, Branch, Stokes, Kraft, Holton, Clark, Welsh.
Please note that, uh, Council Vice President Ry Singer as a co-sponsor, Councilman Mosby as a co-sponsor. Um, this is a investigative hearing, um, and I'm asking, um, the Chair of the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee to work along with, um, the IG's office here, um, understanding doing the investigation, and, um, we're gonna work with them to find out what went on, why, and I'm quite sure we have a report from the IG on their filings, and Chairman Kraft is gonna work directly with him to, uh, make sure that we are able to get the necessary documents that we need. Uh, please note that Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0248R, supporting Say Yes to Education in Baltimore. Resolution for the purpose of supporting Baltimore's proposal to say yes to the Say Yes to Education Foundation. Sponsor President Young, Henry Middleton, Costello, Kraft, Stokes, Holton, Clark, Welsh.
Please note, Councilman Kern as a co-sponsor, Councilman Mosby as a co-sponsor, Council Vice President Ry Singer as a co-sponsor, Chair of Recognized Council Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rules for media adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of suspending rules for media adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged rules are suspended. Chair of Recognized Vice President Ry Singer.
Mr. President, I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 15 dash 0248R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0249R, informational hearing, providing cultural competence training to homeless services providers to assist them in serving homeless LGBTQ youth. Resolution for the purpose of inviting homeless services providers and advocates for LGBTQ youth to appear before the City Council to discuss how cultural competence training on the needs of these youth can be broadly provided to service agencies to assist them in helping Baltimore's vulnerable population of homeless LGBTQ young people. Sponsor Clark, Henry Kraft, Middleton, Holton, Costello, Branch, Stokes, Welsh.
Please note that, um, Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor, Council Vice President Ry Singer a co-sponsor, and, um, Council President Young is a co-sponsor, Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor, Chair of Recognized Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, it is estimated that 40% of the homeless youth in Baltimore City, um, fall under this category of LGBTQ. And, uh, because of, um, their circumstances, because of their experiences, um, they have a difficult time finding the kind of shelter, the kind of safe environments that, where they can begin to build their lives and live safely and successfully. So, what, what advocates of this community have asked us for is to help orient the people who serve homeless young people in this city to what is called the Cultural Competence Training. In other words, a series of exercises, discussions, um, and reviews, and, and with the young people themselves of the LGBTQ community, um, a, a series of exercises and discussions which help the providers better understand what, what this population of young people is about and needs the most and how. And so, this resolution simply calls on us, and, and you'll hear the announcement at the end of this hearing, of the hearing, to hold a hearing, bring in the providers, and ask that we have a discussion with the community about their needs, their special needs and specific needs as part of our homeless community, our homeless youth community, so that we do a better job of understanding and serving. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, no, this is being referred, thank you.
Okay, this has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0250R, Baltimore City Police Academy at Coppin State University. Resolution for the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore City Police Department do a thorough evaluation of the costs and resource benefits of conducting all or parts of police academy training and police officer enhancement training at Coppin State University's Bishop L. Robinson Senior Justice Institute to take advantage of Coppin State University's expertise and state-of-the-art facilities, and calling on representatives from the police department and Coppin State University to appear before the council to discuss a mutually beneficial partnership for police training. Sponsor Mosby, President Young, Kraft, Henry Middleton, Holton, Costello, Branch, Stokes, Welch, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor, Chair of Recognized Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I stand today, um, to talk about a win-win solution. Uh, that's a solution, um, that will benefit Baltimore City, um, cadets, uh, police cadets, as well as residents, um, alike. Uh, Coppin State University, uh, three years ago, had a grand opening of the Public Health and Human Services Building, uh, and then a little bit after that, had a grand opening of Bishop Robinson Justice Institute, uh, where they have state-of-the-art crime labs, they have, uh, meeting facilities, uh, they have real quality environment, uh, for folks in the criminal justice field and careers. Uh, right now, our Baltimore City Police Department, uh, sits at training, um, at the Old Pimlico Middle School, um, that, um, by best case is, um, ill-equipped, uh, to provide them the necessary facilities, uh, to deal with crime labs and to, uh, deal with their, uh, types of training. Um, you know, we want a first-class police force, we have to provide first-class, uh, training for these individuals, and Coppin State provides that. Uh, not only will we do that, but it's a win-win situation for the individual officers because all of the training that they take at Coppin could be directly transferable to a bachelor degree from Coppin State University. And it's another win-win situation with the community because now our cadets are being trained directly in the heart of Baltimore, in West Baltimore. Um, lastly, it's interesting to see from a financial perspective, the outcome of this. It's my expectation that it would be cheaper to conduct this training at Coppin State University, again, with the class, the state-of-the-art class facilities, having the folks in, having our officers in the community, as well providing them the trajectory to obtain a bachelor's degree from a, um, amazing institute, uh, in our city. Uh, so, I thank you for your support. Um, I would like to recognize Commissioner Leonard Hamm, former Baltimore City Commissioner, who is currently the Director of Community Engagement and the Chief of the Coppin State Police Force, uh, for being on hand. Uh, Dr. Beverly O'Brien, who's the Dean of College of Behavioral and, uh, Social Sciences with the Bishop Robinson Justice Institute Falls Under, as well as Dr. Michael Berlin, a professor for criminal justice at Coppin, and Tiffany Jones, a university relations, um, specialist at Coppin State University. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Please note, Council Vice President Ry Singer is a co-sponsor, and, um, welcome, Mr. Hamm, welcome back to City Hall. Uh, this has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0521R, request for state action, tax credits for vacant lot maintenance. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the General Assembly to enact and the governor to sign legislation authorizing the city of Baltimore to issue tax credits to homeowners for providing a valuable public service by maintaining vacant lots adjacent to their homes. Sponsor Scott, Henry, Costello, Branch, Stokes, Holton, Welsh, Clark.
Please note that, uh, Councilwoman Middleton as a co-sponsor, Council President Young is a co-sponsor, any more co-sponsors, Councilman, um, Mosby, Councilman Kern, Council Vice President Ry Singer. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0252R, request for state action, Baltimore City Police Commission. Resolution for the purpose on calling on the General Assembly to enact and the governor to sign legislation authorizing Baltimore City to establish a police commission composed of city residents appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council to oversee the Baltimore City Police Department. Sponsor Henry, President Young, Middleton, Holton, Branch, Kraft, Welsh, Clark.
Chair of Recognized Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also let me thank my, uh, co-sponsors, and, uh, ask with your permission, I'm gonna speak to this and the next one together, since they, they come from the same place, um, both emotionally and philosophically. I do not think that anyone in this room has any doubt, um, at the reality that there is a relationship problem between the Baltimore City Police Department and the communities of Baltimore City. And, um, the, uh, the uprising of earlier this spring, in large part, came from years and years and years of frustration and, um, anger and unhappiness over the loss of that relationship. Both this, uh, resolution asking for state action to form a Baltimore City Police Commission, and the next one, which would strengthen the civilian review board also through state action, um, both of these measures are opportunities for the police department and for city government in general to help rebuild that relationship between our communities and, uh, our department. There are thousands of good police officers in the Baltimore City Police Department who take the responsibility of protecting and serving the people of Baltimore City seriously. Um, and they, uh, every day, go out into, uh, a city of hundreds of thousands of people, most of whom, um, do not have the, um, the same level of respect and appreciation for them as the result of bad apples. That's what it boils down to. There have been bad apples, and the bad apples have spread and contaminated the citywide perception of the police department. And one of the ways that we can help rebuild the trust and the relationship is by having a police commission that would oversee a chief of police. Um, this is a system used in other cities across the country. Um, it's possible, I've, I've been trying to track down the etymology of the fact that we have a police commissioner, um, but we do not have the rest of the Board of Police Commissioners any longer. I don't know how long that's been the case. But, um, we do have a Board of Fire Commissioners who, um, used to appoint and oversee the chief of the fire department, and so this would be a similar, uh, structural change, um, one in which we could have representation from lots of different groups to make sure that, um, all people, um, all people of different attitudes were having their attitudes considered, um, at the highest possible levels of the police department. I would ask for a few more co-sponsors from those who were not able to be here earlier, and then, um, I'm gonna be, um, asking the, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee afterwards to, uh, work with me to schedule a hearing later this fall, um, once we have reached out to the city's delegation to the General Assembly, because since this would be state action, we would need sponsorship there. Um, that, I also want to speak to strengthening-
You want to get your, you want to get your co-sponsors?
Um, I, I guess I could pause for that.
Chair of Recognized, I mean, um, Council Vice President Ry Singer a co-sponsor, Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor. Make sure you listen. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I also wanted to speak to the next resolution, which is strengthening the civilian review board. Again, this would be asking for state legislation to do so. As we all have been told on multiple occasions, um, the Baltimore City Police Department is an agency of state government in some fashion that, uh, makes it difficult for the mayor and city council to pass ordinances, specifically speaking, to its operations. Um, and so, the best way to make certain that we can strengthen our civilian review board is to do so by asking the General Assembly to grant us the authority to do that by ordinance. And, uh, a stronger civilian review board, and by stronger, I don't just mean, um, with a broader representation, um, but also a civilian review board that has subpoena authority. A civilian review board that makes not just recommendations, um, for discipline, but, um, has some measure of following up on that, which will probably involve having to poke a little bit around in the law enforcement officer's bill of rights, but the General Assembly controls both, so let's make sure that they work on that this coming session. Um, so, I would ask for additional co-sponsors for that as well.
Um, Vice President Ry Singer is the co-sponsor, Councilman Mosby, co-sponsor-
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't ask for co-sponsors for that one now because we're still technically on the, on the first one, so I will-
Let me, let me, let me get the first one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop at that point and say thank you.
Resolution 15 oh two five two R has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0253R, request for state action, strengthening and the civi- strengthening the civilian review board. Resolution for the purpose of calling on Baltimore City delegation to the Maryland General Assembly to introduce and secure enactment of legislation authorizing the Maryland City Council to strengthen the Baltimore City Police Department's civilian review board. Sponsor Henry, President Young, Middleton, Costello, Holton, Branch, Kraft, Clark, Welsh.
Um, Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor, Councilman Kern, Council Vice President Ry Singer a co-sponsor, Chair of Recognized. You finished, you finished, Mr.? Henry, you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, this has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15 dash 0254R, implementing law enforcement assisted diversion in Baltimore. Resolution for the purpose of expressing support for an expansion of the law enforcement assisted diversion program nationwide, and requesting that law enforcement and other stakeholders appear before the City Council to discuss how the LEED program could be implemented in Baltimore, which program, which part, what partnerships and structures need to be put in place to allow LEED to succeed, and how to provide it with the necessary human and financial resources. Sponsor Henry, President Young, Middleton, Costello, Branch, Kraft, Stokes, Holton, Welsh, Clark.
Chair of Recognized Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this, uh, spring, I was, uh, I was honored to be invited up to Columbia University for the, uh, launching of a new toolkit on local police reform by the Center for Popular Democracy. And while I was there, I met a young woman named Lisa Dowgard, who was with the Public Defenders in Seattle, and she told me about this program, LEED, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. And, uh, it started in Seattle a few years ago, and, uh, since moved on to Santa Fe, and I believe Albany is starting it up, um, very soon. And there are several dozen other subdivisions around the country that are looking at it, one of which is Baltimore City. And, uh, there were, have there been further conversations since then- And there were, there have been further conversations since then. A delegation from Baltimore attended a national convening earlier this summer hosted by the White House. The Obama Administration has made it very clear that they want to be supportive of seeing this program expanded, and we're looking at support not just from the national government, but also from national funders. Essentially, what law, excuse me, law enforcement assisted diversion does is it takes people who would have otherwise been arrested for nonviolent crimes, and it diverts them into case management. And frankly, from everything we've seen so far, the program lives and dies on the case management. If you can take somebody who otherwise would only be in the hands of the police because they are addicted to some type of substance, or because they have no home to call their own, and instead of simply arresting them and putting them into the criminal justice system, we can connect them with the services that they need, then we can reduce the, the number of trips that that person is going to keep making into prison, back out, and back in by cutting off the original source of the problem, which was, we didn't help them with their problem. We just threw them in jail because that was the way to get them out of sight. And so the police department and the mayor's office have already pulled together a extensive working group, including representation from the Health Department and the Housing Department, and I'm thinking, I miss, feel like I'm missing somebody else. Oh, State's Attorney's Office, I'm sorry, State's Attorney's Office. And I think that there's a lot of potential for this program here in Baltimore, and it would be a good time now to have the council read in fully on what we're going to need to make this program work here. So I thank my co-sponsors.
This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Please note Council Vice President Rossinger is a co-sponsor.
City Council Resolution 15-0255R, Request for State Action: Special Sales Tax on Handgun and Handgun Ammunition to Fund Police Body Cameras. Resolution for the Purpose of Calling on the General Assembly to Enact and the Governor to Sign Legislation Establishing a 10% Special Sales Tax on Handguns and Handgun Ammunition to Generate an Ongoing Revenue Stream That Could Be Used to Provide Matching Grants to Local Jurisdictions to Obtain and Maintain Body Cameras for Their Officers. Sponsored Henry, Kraft, Stokes, Clark.
Please note Council Vice President as a co-sponsor. Chair of, Councilman Henry, Councilman Branch as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the idea of taxing ammunition as a way to reduce gun violence has circulated for a number of years. We have not generally taken it up in this body because there are not that many stores in Baltimore City that actually sell ammunition. And so it seemed kind of a silly thing for us to be talking about, but the reality is that there are plenty of stores right outside Baltimore City that do sell ammunition. And while we could get into a very long conversation over gun control and ammunition control in general, and I suspect we may get into a little bit of that at the hearing for this, the reality is that would be something that would have to be done by the state in order to have the widespread effect needed to impact ammunition in Baltimore City. And it, it occurred to me when I was doing some research on this, that having that conversation at the state level might actually be a little bit easier if we talked about where that money would go, rather than just having it be one more tax or fee thrown into the conversation down at this General Assembly. And that's when I remembered how much we said we would probably end up having to spend on body cameras for the police department. And if there would be a particular source of revenue that we could go to the state for help in paying for the cost of those body cameras, then I figured that would be helpful as well. So I, I thank my co-sponsors, one of which just raised his hand.
Please note that Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor.
And I look forward to a hearing on this resolution later this fall as well. Thank you.
All right, this has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0256R, Request for Federal Action: Fully Fund the Corporation for National and Community Service. Resolution for the Purpose of Strongly Urging the Members of Maryland's Congressional Delegation to Vote to Support Funding the Corporation for National and Community Service at Current Levels to Sustain Its Valuable Investment in Our Citizens and Our Community. Sponsored Costello, President Young, Henry, Middleton, Kraft, Branch, Kraft, Holton, Stokes, Clark, Welsh.
Please note Councilman Kern, Councilman Mosby, Council Vice President Rossinger as a co-sponsor. Chair of, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to ensure continued funding for the Governor's Office of Volunteerism, which is, I will note, is a nonpartisan entity that played a critical role both during and in the recovery efforts after the civil unrest. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encourage the rules are suspended. Chair of, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of dumping Resolution 15-0256R, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, I mean, all opposed, nay. The most encourage this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 15-0257R, Establishing an Open Space and Parks Task Force. Resolution for the Purpose of Calling on the Establishment of an Open Space and Parks Task Force to Produce an Open Space and Parks Plan to Guide Baltimore City's Development and Maintenance of These Key Issues for the 21st Century. Sponsored Stokes, President Young, Henry, Middleton, Costello, Branch, Kraft, Holton, Welsh, Clark.
Chair, please note Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor. Chair of, Councilman Stokes.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, several weeks ago, the Recreation and Parks Committee held a hearing to talk to the issue of establishing a plan for open space and parks in the city of Baltimore, attended by the Department of Rec. Parks, Planning, the Deputy Mayor, and others, including Parks and People, and many of the advocates of our parks and our open spaces in the city. And it was established at that particular hearing that a task force should be set up to assist the Bureau. The administration has agreed, and the Director Stosser, as well as Director Burkine, are going to be a part of the task force. Neil Freeland would be co-chairing it with Marianne Akers, Marianne Akers from Morgan State University, and, and Parks and People would staff and, and work with us on this. The long story short is that everyone is in agreement, and so to hold a, another hearing would be redundant. Given that, Mr. President, I am asking to suspend the rules to allow for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encourage the rules are suspended. Chair of, Councilman Stokes.
Thanks, Mr. President. I do move for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0257R, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encourage this resolution is adopted. Chair of, Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce a resolution from the floor.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of suspending rules to allow the introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encourage the rules are suspended. The resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 15-0258R. The clerk will read the resolution into the record.
City Council Resolution 15-0258R, Moving Dirt Bike Cues Out of Neighborhoods and Into Dirt Bike Parks. Resolution for the Purpose of Calling on Representatives from the Police Department, the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Finance, the Law Department, the Dirt Bike Riding Community and Neighborhoods Impacted by Dirt Bike Riding, to Join In With the City Council in a Series of Work Sessions to Create a Viable Plan for Addressing the Inappropriate Operation of Dirt Bikes in Baltimore's Neighborhoods by Creating a World-Class Dirt Bike Park in Baltimore City. Sponsored Welsh.
Chair, Chair of, Councilman Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Before I proceed, I'd like to introduce Kim Smith. Kim, would you stand? Kim is here in support of building a dirt bike park in Baltimore City. Her son was killed by a dirt bike. And if you would please, I would like for you to just turn around so I can read the poem that's actually on the back of your shirt. "We ride to fly, to feel, to touch, to breathe, to laugh, to soar, to overcome, to relax, to belong, to feel strong, to heal, to be loved, to feel loved. To communicate without words, we ride to live." Mr. President, these are the words of dirt bike riders. The author is anonymous, but this is the feelings that they have when they ride their dirt bikes on the streets of Baltimore City. And riding those dirt bikes on the streets of Baltimore City makes them unsafe, our neighborhoods unsafe, and inconveniences the citizens of Baltimore. They have no other venue in Baltimore City but the streets. To build a dirt bike park gives them that venue, and that's why I'm introducing this resolution. The children of Baltimore need to feel supported and loved, and building a dirt bike park does just that, takes them out of harm, and, and makes our communities safer for both community and dirt bike riders. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Recreation and Parks Committee. You can find the Consent Calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving the Consent Calendar, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encourage this calendar is approved. Chair of, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm going in a minute to ask for floor privileges for a group of wonderful people and a very heroic lifeguard. But before I do, if I may, I'd like to read this brief letter that was sent by Marguerite Murray of Council Services to you, Mr. President, and to me, about the young Lady Diamond that is being honored this evening. On Wednesday, August 12th, 2015, I was a patron at the Clifton Park Swimming Pool, located near the Rita Church Community Center. While on the deck of the swimming pool area, while talking to other patrons, I witnessed Ms. Wilkins, lifeguard, dive into the pool and rescue an adolescent from drowning. It appeared Ms. Wilkins reached the child just moments before she, the child, became unconscious. At the time of this urgency, there were at least 20 people in the pool area. Ms. Wilkins' exemplary observation and quick action saved a young life. All of the people on deck exhibited appreciation, happiness, slapped, and gave Ms. Wilkins a standing ovation for her outstanding job performance. I am honored to send this writing to single out and commend this dedicated lifeguard at the Clifton Park Swimming Pool. A job well done. So, and thank you, Ms. Murray. Why, would you just stand up so we can all know who you are? Thank you. And would you step up and join us? Mr. President, I'd like to move to allow floor privileges, and I will name everyone so you know. For first and foremost, Ms. Diamond Wilkins, the lifeguard. Would you stand? For her mother, Tamika McNeil. Her grandmother, Rosalyn Wilkins, there you go. For Darrell Sutton, her boss as chief of City Aquatics. And Bob Wall, who's head of recreation for all of us throughout the city. May I have a second so I can get all the wonderful people on the floor?
Motion by Council, motion by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilman Henry, that floor privileges be extended to Councilwoman Clark's guest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, darling. Here, let me get this visitor passed off. This is Ms. Murray, who wrote the letter. Thank you for being here. Thank you, grandma. I'm a bubby myself. And thank you, and bye. Okay, so here's how we do this. I have two resolutions that I would like to present, and we all face this way because the president can see over our heads, and these young ladies are going to take our pictures, okay? And the television cameras are on us. Can you hold this piece of paper for me in this? I got it. First of all, we are so proud of you. I'm a vertical swimmer. I almost didn't graduate college because I couldn't pass the swimming test. But really, you not only are a wonderful swimmer and lifeguard, you're the only person there who saw what was happening and just moved immediately and, and rescued that little girl before she died. And even as she was, I mean, thank you so much. God bless you. So, for you. City Council Resolution. City Council Baltimore Resolution, Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Ms. Diamond Wilkins in recognition of a dedicated lifeguard and heroic rescue at Clifton Park Swimming Pool, presented from the entire membership on this 17th day of August 2015, signed by our President Bernard Jack Young and East Sider, and sponsored by myself and all members of the City Council. Okay. And Mr. Darrell Sutton, where are you, Dar, oh, there you are. Step right over. Is he a good boss?
Yes.
Okay, good. Then we'll go ahead and approve this. Mr. Darrell Sutton, Aquatic Director for the City of Baltimore, in recognition of hiring wonderful lifeguards and overseeing them so well. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution be presented on this 17th day of August 2015. Jack Young, Mary Pat Clark, and all of us together. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, okay, let's, we're, open your, oh, oh, great. Step right up. I can help you.
Hi, and thank you for your bravery. Thank you for a care, thank you for being there. The presidential citation-
Woo, oh, you're a friend.
The President has given me the honor to present this to you as Chair of Recreation and Parks Committee. City of Baltimore Presidential Citation, I, Bernard C. Jack Young, President of the Baltimore City Council, to hereby present this President's Citation to Diamond Wilkins in recognition of your dedicated service as a lifeguard at the Clifton Park Swimming Pool. Your exemplary observation and quick action saved a young life on August 12th, 2015. We commend you for a job well done. And witness whereof, I have attached my signature to this citation on this memorable occasion, given under the corporate seal of the City of Baltimore, this 17th day of August in the year 2015. Bernard C. Jack Young, President of the Baltimore City Council.
All right. All right, can you take our picture? Okay, like, look at it. Okay. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're getting ourselves organized. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is it working, my camera?
We now move the bills on the second reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation.
Mr. President, I would move that we refer to all bills on the second and third reader by short title.
Seconded by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of short titles for the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries with a short title for the duration of the meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0418, Alligating and Greening Program.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a bill that we had heard some time ago. We finally got all the amendments together. The amendments are on the members' desks. These are some administration bills that we use to clean up and actually make it easier to green and gate alleys. I would move the amendments that are on the members' desks.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments are adopted.
With the bill favorably as amended.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0529, Historical and Architectural Preservation, 50th Anniversary Reauthorization.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is the rewrite of the chap ordinance in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Commission on Historic and Architectural Preservation. They had worked on this bill for well over a year, almost two years, rewriting the chap ordinance. There are amendments to the bill on the members' desks. I would move the amendments at this time.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes --
Move the bill favorable at this time. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, hold it.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize -- I didn't realize it was an amendment.
Chair recognizes Councilman --
Mr. President, I would defer to Councilwoman Clark at this time.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Yes, I have an amendment from the floor because, yeah, at the time of the last hearing, we just were having trouble with the language, not with the concept. So basically, we got the language right. It came over really from chap. I just wanted to make sure that when chap makes decisions about properties, that it also looks at the local neighborhood and sees how a development proposal relates to the height, massing, and scale of what's already there. It might be two-story row houses, and they're looking at building four-story gargantuan's. That chap would look at the surroundings and take that into account. That's what this amendment is, and I would move that amendment and ask for a second and your vote.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of the floor amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Amendment has been adopted.
Move the bill favorably as amended.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The floor amendment is also adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft. I'm sorry, I'm just -- this bill moves to third reader. Sorry.
City Council Bill 15-0241R, Request for State Action, Ban Hydraulic Fracturing in Maryland.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, our council's position on hydraulic fracturing was stated pretty strongly a couple of years ago when we passed a prohibition on treatment on any water used for fracturing at our treatment plant. We passed this resolution out of committee. However, there has been some concern because of the fact that there is a moratorium on fracturing here in the state through 2017. At the request of many of our friends and neighbors and colleagues, to be asked that we set this bill back to committee at this time and in due deference to them, I would move that we send the bill back to committee at this time.
Seconded by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of sending this resolution back to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and this resolution is sent back to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee, Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0530, Res zoning Certain Properties in the Sharp-Ludden Hall Community.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move to finding the facts.
Seconded by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts adopted. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Yeah, Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Craft. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0502, Sale of Property, NS Worcester Street, 417, 10 Northwest Ridgely Street, Block 833, Lot 001A.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing's held on August 13. There were no objections to the bill. I moved the -- on behalf of committee, I moved the bill favorably.
Seconded by Council Vice President Ross Singer. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0504, Collection of Taxes, Fees, Etc., Warning of Lean and Potential Foreclosure.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also heard this bill on August 13, 2015. Again, no objections to the bill, but law did have an amendment to change the language to make it legally sufficient. That amendment is on your desk, the desk of our colleagues, and I move the bill -- I'm sorry. I move the amendments.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes --
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes --
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0544, Sale of Property, 3306 North Hilton Street, Unit 203.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. No objections. We heard the bill August 13. I move the bill favorable.
Seconded by Councilman -- Council Vice President Ross Singer. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this resolution is adopted. Third reader to be held one meeting.
City Council --
That's not a resolution, this bill. That was the resolution, that was sale of property. This bill is approved. Third reader to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0463, Res zoning a portion of 3901 Buena Vista Avenue. City Council Bill 15-0507, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1912 West Baltimore Street. City Council Bill 15-0508, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1806 West Baltimore Street.
Third reader for final passes.
City Council Bill 14-0447, Baltimore City Landmarks List, Public Interiors City Hall Rotunda, President Young, Craft, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Rice, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee would like to announce that the hearing on Council Resolution Number 150245R, Request for Federal Action, Thorough Review of the Proposed Nuclear Deal with Iran, which is scheduled for this Wednesday, August 19th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. here in the Council Chambers, has been canceled. It will be rescheduled upon request of the sponsor. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 150546, The Building, Fire, and Related Codes, on Wednesday, September 30th, 2015, from 9:30 a.m. through 12:00 noon here in the Council Chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will reconvene its hearing on Council Bill 150546, The Building, Fire, and Related Codes, on Wednesday, October 7th, 2015, beginning at 9:30 a.m. here in the Council Chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-0535, City Streets Closing Worcester Street on September 3rd, Thursday, September 3rd, 2:30 p.m. here in the Council Chambers. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-0547 on September 17th, 2015, at 2:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. That's at 2:00 p.m. That's a different time change. And it's an ordinance concerning the Urban Renewal Barclay Amendment.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health Committee is going to reschedule. City Council Resolution 15-0239R was originally scheduled for next Monday at 6:00 p.m. It's an informational hearing about the heroin task force. It's for the purposes of calling the Health Commissioner and the co-chairs of the Mayor's Heroin Task Force and Prevention Task Force to appear before the City Council to report on the findings and recommendations of the Heroin Treatment and Prevention Task Force. Not to report on the findings, recommendations, to tell us how we can implement these recommendations. So, I'm going to have the Finance Department, Health Department, and all the other agencies that are involved in this. I know that the co-chairs of the Commission Task Force will be here, so look forward to seeing how we're going to implement the recommendations of the Heroin Task Force on Wednesday, October 7th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Yeah, Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0542, Wednesday, September 16th, at 1:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers. This is a rezoning certain properties in the Rubington Central Business District. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 15-0548, Wednesday, September 16th, at 1:15 p.m. in the Council Chambers. This is rezoning certain properties in the Barclay Community. Mr. President, I move for suspension of rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Seconded by Councilwoman Holton. Seconded by Councilwoman Holton. All in favor of suspending rules, announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0559 on Wednesday, September 16th, at 1:30 p.m. in the Council Chambers. This is a rezoning of 139 West Austin Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 14-0426, Wednesday, September 30th, at 1:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers. This is a rezoning located at 1713 East Pratt Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 15-0526 on Wednesday, September 30th, at 1:15 p.m. in the Council Chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use parking, open off-street area located at from 4001 through 4005 Garrison Boulevard. Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use Committee, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold voting sessions, which are televised, on Bill Number 12-0152, which is Transform Baltimore, on Wednesday, September 10th, at 11:00 a.m. in the Council Chambers. The committee will also hold a voting session on Bill 12-0152, which is Transform Baltimore, on Wednesday, September 16th, at 5:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers, and this is televised. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Wells. Any more committee announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments will hold a hearing Wednesday, September 9th, 2015, 10:00 a.m. in Council Chambers to hear Council Bill 150293. Julian Todd Andres Lee is a member of the Ethics Board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. Any more committee announcements?
Mr. President, members, Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on September 17th, that's a Thursday, at 4:00 p.m. on City Council Resolution 15-249R. That is the very same one on cultural competence training that I described at great length earlier in this meeting, and that will be at 4:00 on Thursday, the 17th of September. We hope that all of the people in the administration of the City of Baltimore who work in homeless services would be represented so that we can have a good discussion of where we go from here. Thanks.
Thank you. Regular announcements. First, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Helen Holton, August 18th, and Councilwoman Specter, September 6th, so we can give them a hand. And I also would like to introduce to the public the General Counsel for the City Council, Ms. Rebecca Tabby. She will stand up and just give away. Before we get any more regular announcements, Councilman -- Council Vice President Ross Singer, I would like to request a moment of silence for a great civil rights leader and former chairman of the NAACP. And I see President Tessa Hill here. I want to welcome her back to City Hall for Julian Barnes. Want to do a moment of silence for him for all the great work that he did to bring about some good things for everybody, really. Civil rights movement was something that he really took to heart, and I'm quite sure that Dr. Levi Watkins, who was a good friend of his, is ready to meet him and welcome him into having full job well done. Regular announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise on a sad note, asking for a moment of silence for Ms. Frances Raldieras, known as Frankie, to her friends and family. Wonderful young woman who was taken too soon. Former employee of Johns Hopkins, and she brought a lot of light into the lives of people who live, work, and play in the 4th District. And so I would ask this council to provide a moment of silence at the end. The other sad note I rise to mention is that tonight is the last council meeting and the end of the last day of Ms. Margaret Porter, who has been my legislative assistant for the last three and a half years. I got through the first term on the council thinking, well, I've been a legislative assistant. I don't need, you know, somebody else doing that for me. I can do all that. Boy, was that awful. And then Maggie came along at the beginning of my second term and made my life so much better. And all of yours probably as well, especially if you had hoped that I would remember things on my own, that instead you were able to tell Maggie. I can't talk at length about this because if I do, the president will think I'm making fun of the way he's talking right now. So, I'm going to try to keep my remarks brief and simply say that Maggie's leaving us to go to grad school full-time at UMBC, where she'll be getting a public policy degree, so hopefully she can come back and tell us how we should be doing this better. And -- Um, and I wish her all the best.
Oh, Councilman, before we get to you, oh, we need to go back to the Education and Youth. Councilwoman Clark, you just need to suspend the rules because we didn't do it.
Well, once you start suspending the rules, you never stop. So, I'd like to begin by suspending the rules on my announcement.
Second by Council Vice President Ross Singer. All those in favor, suspend the rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Most encouraged.
Yeah, I already announced the hearing. It's the, it's the 17th of September at 4:00 in these chambers.
It's an informational hearing.
It's the hearing about LGB. Yeah, cultural training. Yeah. Cultural competency training. You all are doing very well. You've been listening. And I'm proud of you. And we're going to have a field trip. We don't have to come back here. We don't have to come back here till the 21st of September.
What committee?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been signed to Education and Youth Committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh, the Annual Resident Services Incorporated Rising Star Scholarship Golf Tournament is on Friday, September 11, 2015. This tournament, this tournament was created in 2009 to help raise funds to award scholarships to deserving high school seniors living in Housing Authority of Baltimore City Public Housing Communities. Since 2009, the RSI Rising Star Scholarship Golf Tournament has raised more than $125,000 and assisted 35 high school graduates to help them achieve their dream of pursuing careers in architecture, art, computers, engineering, medicine, and more. I stand today, we expect so much of our children, yet we all know that sometimes a barrier of them getting higher education is finances. Today, I'm going to ask my colleagues that we take on an initiative, and I'm going to send out a letter to maybe raise $1,000 apiece, which would be $15,000, to help RSI raise the necessary funds to provide gifted and talented Baltimore City students over four-year scholarships. Right now, the scholarships is just a one-time kind of scholarship into school, but we all know, um, the issues of going through college and trying to have that money to enroll year after year. So again, they're trying to raise an endowment up to $500,000 to provide four-year scholarships to Baltimore City Public School students, again, who are currently living in Baltimore Housing Complex. So, uh, I'm just putting out a challenge that maybe this body can raise $15,000 to help the scholarship fund going forward. So, I'll send a letter out to all my colleagues tomorrow, asking that you participate. If you cannot, it's, we have like a month to do so. That's fine as well, but maybe this is something we can do on a yearly basis because we don't have a Baltimore City Scholarship program. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm not sure how many of our colleagues are aware, but the city recently, uh, put in an application for a Choice Neighborhoods grant through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That would cover the catchment area in central west Baltimore, which Councilman Mosby and I represent. And it would be a truly transformative investment in that area of at least $21 million, with potentially up to the same amount in matching funds from our nonprofit partners in the city. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the folks at our housing department for all the hard work that went into creating that application and putting us in a, in a, hopefully a strong position to compete for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise this evening to, um, share some news that for 20 years, it's truly been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Baltimore since 1995. Life is an evolving process where we must continually assess and make decisions. During my tenure in office, I've had some health challenges and several surgeries. I'm not old, yet I realize I'm not as young as I used to be. And approaching midlife has been an interesting journey. And due to health challenges, I'm formally announcing this evening my retirement from the city council as of the end of this council term in December 2016. I work hard on behalf of the citizens of my district and Baltimore City and will continue to do so as a mem, as a citizen of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman, um, Holton, I want to thank you for your exemplary services to your district. Thank you for being one of the supporters of this president. And I wish you well in anything that you decide that you're going to do. And I do understand, um, the reason behind what you just said. But, um, still looking forward to working with you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, September 21, at 5:00 PM. And I ask a moment of silence for Frances Raldieras and Julian Barnes.
Thank you. There been no further, but this concludes the 98th meeting in the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.